Good evening, everyone. May I have a motion to open the meeting? Yes, Bill and a second. Heather? All in favor? Should we do the pledge first, though? We're good? Don't we take the pledge of allegiance? So let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight is a special meeting of the Board of Education. It is a work session of board trustees, and we're here tonight to discuss the board's goals and the district's goals. At the end of our work session, we have some appointments and additional business matters to consider. There will also be an audience-to-visitors opportunity after the additional business matters. And just quickly, before we jump into our board and district goals, I just wanted to read one little thing that I found while perusing the school board president's handbook from NISBA. And I thought it was a nice way to set the tone before we begin tonight. So it says, and this is the opening, "And the role of the board in student achievement." School boards set the vision for student learning and articulate the beliefs about students' learning that serve as a foundation for district goals and direction for school improvement. This vision is the unifying purpose of the board as it establishes the criteria for which all decisions will be made, thus impacting multiple factors that contribute to student learning. So that's just something to keep in mind as we go through our board goals and our district goals. Mr. Monastero, can you, are you looking for the one, the board goal slide? Yep. So we're going to look first at the board goals, which were adopted at our last public board meeting. And the purpose of our work session tonight is for all of us to talk about how to achieve those goals, make an outline and work through that. So we also have district goals on the agenda tonight, and we're going to try to be mindful of the time also. So I'm going to sort of play the role of moderator and clock watcher.
Right, there's a copy in everybody's folder.
So the first goal was to improve Cold Spring Harbor's ranking on Long Island and in New York State. And, you know, when thinking about this, I think one of the important things that we've discussed is that it's very incremental when we look at this. And also, it's important to note that the board, or the district rankings are really from a two-year look back. So as we think about our goals and the work we're doing, we need to know that results will take a while to surface as well. So we had like a rough outline that we were working with, which I'm happy to review with people, or we can just throw out some suggestions. How would, what do you think? Bill, you got some?
I think-
You look like you have thought.
Well, I just think, can I make an opening comment about goals in general?
I would love that.
I think as we think about district goals and board goals, we should try where possible to have metrics so we can measure how we're doing. So a goal that can't be measured is kind of hard to really evaluate. And I think we should have some sort of timing, which I appreciate you just mentioned, right? So having a goal of improving our rankings in certain areas, we would think about how do we measure that, but also acknowledge maybe that it might take several years to actually measure those results. So with that, I agree. I think if we start with maybe some of the rough ideas we had when we came up with these, that might be helpful.
Yeah, so we have some rough outlines just based on feedback from the board. So why don't I go through them and then we can circle back? So the first one was examine test results, elementary, Regent, and AP to see where incremental improvements can continue to be made. Include comparative district scores when they are released. Look at offering, at course offerings and rigor, consistency of curriculum year over year and school to school, preparedness of students, elementary to junior high, junior high to high school. Continue class size study to see where improvements can be made. Investigate the impact of Regent's results on student transcripts. Review of college placement, oh, that, we moved that actually to a different board goal. Sorry, these are old notes from an earlier compilation, so I'll end it there. And I think actually the Regent's results on student transcripts could go between this goal and the next goal. So I think that's, that's up for discussion also. Oh, and we had a timing on it saying the board would schedule at least two work sessions, so sessions similar to this, but really focused on one goal in particular, to continue to outline improvement recommendations and to actually get the work done. And the timing for that, we wanted to complete potentially in the late winter or early spring is what we were looking at.
So maybe if we could tackle the first-
Just make sure you're really talking in because the recording doesn't pick it up even though we can all hear you.
Yeah, I hear an echo, so.
Okay, good.
I may start singing now.
Save that for the end, please.
So I guess I have a question. I think on this first one of improving rankings, things like exam test results, which we do spend a decent amount of time on, I guess I would ask Jill, do you, do you have a feeling about the things that were sort of thrown out? The Regents, the AP, the, and are those sort of fair assessments?
Absolutely. I mean, the elementary three through eight assessments would be something that we'd look at. I'm going to pull this closer. But you'll note, like even on the district goals, we talk about data cycles and really looking at data. And again, those could be local assessments, it could be benchmark assessments. So we use multiple assessments to really look at growth. So it's not just the standardized exams. We have local assessments, particularly at the elementary star assessments, and then within certain courses. That's something that we're working on with the teachers and to make. Like so if two English teachers are teaching 11 R, that they have similar assessments.
So what, if you were thinking about those different metrics, what, what would you think is a fair measure of like improvement? Like would the average of each of those going up be sign of improvement? Or would it have to go up by a certain percentage before we said we improved?
I think you'd have to look at each exam differently, so I couldn't give you an answer. It'd be something that I'd have to really talk about with the leadership team in terms of setting those metrics. So, you know, particularly like the three through eight exams, I'm looking at that. You know, third grade is an area that we really feel like we could make growth in, where other grades are really performing very well. And you want to look at, you know, one of the things that you noted, like where you're looking at the trends for the students, where you're comparing the students, not just the grade. So while I say third grade, that's the first year in of exam, and that's an area that we have, we note that we could make growth in. And that's something even just having conversations with our K to two teachers and looking at the curriculum and things like that. But again, I'd have to look at the measures for each of those assessments and really have conversations with the leadership, the district level leaders, and as well as the building principals and the chair people.
And I think there's been a lot of great work being done in this effort. This is, you know, looking at all the people out here who are doing amazing work. We have great scores. I think the point is, and this comes up all the time, is it's so small and incremental, the improvements that help you to boost your rating. And there's some things we can control in those rating scores and some things we can't control that-
Right.
-are part of the rating score. So I think just helping, and board goals are really supposed to help support district goals, helping to do some work with just a different perspective, I think, is the point of this, to say, you know, what about this and what about that? And can we improve here? So we'd look to you for a recommendation on what exactly incrementally you all see, but then also how the board can be supportive in getting that goal accomplished.
Yeah, so I mean, you mentioned class size. So, you know, is that something that, you know, the board supported smaller class sizes? You know, we look at enrollment here all the time, so that obviously, you know, our enrollment has decreased, and we look at that from, you know, the eighth grade going in through nine through 12 and just see how those class sizes are different. Are we losing 25 students per grade? And typically, those 25 students per grade would be one section. So if you're saying, oh, we're going to maintain staffing, well, then that can be spread out a little bit. And so those class sizes at the secondary level could be smaller. At the elementary level, you've made significant adjustments this summer, you know, on those class sizes. So are we maintaining that in the future? Because I don't see this as a one-year goal. I mean, I don't think the board thought so either.
No, it says continue the study, so I think that that's important. And I think when we look at class size, you know, even, let's say, in the senior high school, when we, a conversation that came up quite a bit over the summer was in these, you know, advanced classes where we're expecting that kids maybe will drop out of them, the math classes. Are we loading the classes so big that then it's harder to find success in the class? Is that something we should be looking at? And then would that incrementally improve math scores for high school students, right? So I think that's, when we talk about the work that we're doing to make incremental improvements, I think that's really where we should be looking. So in addition to, of course, the foundational years and what the class sizes are like, it should absolutely be something that we focus on. I think we should be looking at those class course loads and how many kids are in those classes and, you know, where we can make slight improvements because, go ahead.
Right, so coming up, you know, students will be selecting their courses, you know, through December, January. And then we really, I would say February, March, Mr. Dambuski and Ms. Hekt, we'd be really looking at where we are in terms of, you know, where the students populated each of those courses. And then as a team, we look at that and we can make some recommendations to the board in terms of breakage, or, you know, this one's kind of on the cusp, or we see the drop down in this course to this. But we, Ms. Hekt, do you have the enrollment number from, projected from next year to? No? Okay, that's okay. You know, it's something that we can look at.
Well, so, and I think the purpose of this meeting, just so we stay on track, is to make sure we have our outline here of what information we want to make the goals and not have an in-depth discussion about each subpoint or we'll never get through all our goals. We will not have a short meeting today.
Right.
The only thing I would like to make a recommendation on in this is we just talked about investigating the impact of Regents' results on student transcripts and possibly moving that to the next goal, which is the college placement and results. I think we should move that there, but I also think, I think it's two parts, so I think we should keep something in this goal, and maybe everyone wants to help with the language, that says, you know, investigate the hold harmless policies used in other districts, you know.
Aren't the Regent's scores used to create the rankings?
Yeah, they are, but they still count. They're still on your transcript if you-
No, I know, but I think they should stay in the-
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying we should have it here, and it should be worded differently. And then we should move the other one down, because I think it should be in both.
Right, so let's, I just want to be clear that, so the Regents' results have to be on the transcript? It's whether, how they are calculated within the GPA or within each quarter? So they have to be on the transcript.
Right, and one of the questions is for the districts that are outperforming us and ranking higher, where it's still counting into their ranking, what's their policy on counting the Regents into their GPA? And are they then, if they're not counting it, are they implementing a final exam? Or are they just saying that they take? So I think that would be helpful information for us to have in this discussion.
That's like a comparative district. You had that as part of this conference comparative district results and like-
Yeah, exactly.
-calculate that into that.
That would be great.
And when would we be able to have a meeting on something like that? If we're looking towards February, it sounds like we may want a February or March work session on like looking at class sizes. We kind of mentioned timing on that. But what about timing for looking at comparatives?
Yeah, I think, I mean-
Is that, when is that even released? Is that out already?
Well, I'm just going to say, districts don't tend to always report their hold harmless, like they haven't till later, even very last minute. Ms. Dambuski, I'm sure you could echo that. But while, you know, we've, on the high school principal listserv, you know, they've sought out that information. I'm going to tell you, it's not always accurate, and people change at the last minute. So, I mean, we can give the best data that we have and certainly put out a survey. I'm just saying that they kind of wait till the last minute.
But wouldn't they be, wouldn't it be accurate of what they did in the past?
No.
They would lie about what they did in the past?
Oh, no, you're talking about past, what they've done in the, oh, yeah, we can give you past data. Oh, no, no, I thought you meant going forward.
No, the comparative school districts who outperformed us, can we know?
Sure.
We could know, I mean, we could just ask them also.
And we have that data.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if we have all six, but I know we have a good portion, either four out of six.
Okay, well, then we could find, we could call them up and say, for these years, what was your policy and how did you handle it?
And they don't go back and forth, right?
I mean, even if they do, it would be helpful to know.
And we've never gone back and forth, we've always stayed with it?
No, so the hold harmless just came out. I would say that was like a suggestion during, you know, after the pandemic.
Right.
And so ours is 20% calculation in the GPA, and we use 12% as a hold harmless. But like I can give you an example of PSYOCIT. PSYOCIT last year did a hold harmless. And then when we sought feedback, are you planning to do it again? Their response is, we don't know yet.
What was their percentage, their hold harmless?
Was it, their hold harmless, I don't think they counted at all.
Okay, I'm worried that we're getting too deep into something that will be a conversation when we're doing the actual work and not the outline. It's so easy to do.
Yeah, I was asking for that and also a timeline because in the initial outline, we were looking for examining just the test results, too, for elementary assessments, for Regents', and for AP. So what those comparative school districts achieved and comparing the classes and, you know.
Maybe probably by December, January.
So I was going to say, too, would, January seems like a good time for us to have a meeting because we have a lot to cover in the next couple of months, too. So a January work session.
So when do we have to know by, though? I don't mean to go back to this, but you're saying timeline, when do we have to say?
Now you're talking about the whole harmless part.
Just make sure you're talking, even though we can hear you, it doesn't pick it up at all.
So what is the timeline on, I mean, this is all-
We can wait on that.
You can?
Absolutely. What happens is at the end, so if, just say you made the decision in May, and the quarter grades would get recalculated. So like the waiting would change.
Okay.
And this is something the Sit Committee is also investigating with Mr. Dambuski and putting a lot of work into, so they're going to also give a recommendation. So is there a timeline for that also?
Dan, can you just talk at the microphone? Thank you.
We all need like a headset or something.
When we met the other day, we kind of mapped out our subsequent meetings. We figure to really kind of dive into this, because it is, it's an onion, has a lot of layers to it, and to really kind of look at all the data, including the last couple of years of scores, comparing if we had a hold harmless versus not having a hold harmless, what that impact would have been on our student body, on our Regents' numbers. We figured it probably will take three to four meetings, and we meet as a committee once a month. So we just had our meeting in October, so we kind of had like a February-March timeline.
Okay, so if we have our first work session in January and our second one in March, then we're on track with Sit, which is a good. And by the way, I've asked Heather to be our note taker this evening.
That's why I'm typing. I am paying attention.
Yes, yes. So thank you. So does everyone feel like that seems reasonable?
So it sounds like we can have two work sessions, one in January, looking at the comparative scores, and another one, we may be able to combine the class size discussion with the discussion on hold harmless.
Yeah, I would say the end of March.
By March, so maybe a January and a March. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Everyone else?
Is everyone comfortable with that plan for goal number one?
Yep.
Okay, goal number two. So again, these say improve, but it's not because excellent work isn't being done. The college placement process is very, very good, and it's just because we are looking at ways to always improve and support the district efforts. So I went to the 10th grade meeting the other night, and it was excellent. And now I'm addicted to Naviance. Thanks so much, Mona, for my new addiction. So the first, I think, part here was to review the college placement process sort of from when the inception starts with the students, when the first communication starts with students and families. Communication was like another part of that. So I think there's sort of like the timeline, the communication, and then how the advisory system is working. But now that I've told you about my addiction to Naviance, I did talk to a couple of college placement people who said there's other, a couple of other systems out there. So Mona, I don't know if there's other things that you've been looking at or that you've looked at through the years, but I think it'd be worthwhile to have that discussion, too. I know some schools use other platforms that they prefer. But I'm enjoying looking at Naviance right now, so I can't imagine what else is out there. But I know that you know and you can inform us also. So I think that would be helpful to us. Is there anything else?
I think we talked about the scheduling process, just sort of looking at, looking ahead, you know, looking at the four years as a whole. And also perhaps, and I know I've spoken with Mr. Dambuski about this 1,000 times, maybe having parents come in just sort of like, well, this is what my kid did. And, you know, because with every high school, not just, not our school, a lot of it is, if you know, you know. And that's just a function of kids in school.
That's exactly what we talked about when we were creating this school. I don't think this is on, can you hear me? You can?
It's confusing because I can hear you on the way, but-
Is that we do learn a lot from our friends or people who have been through it, just kind of like through the grapevine, right? We don't really know.
And you'd rather learn it from the experts, because I think we do have excellent, I know, we do have excellent experts here. So we should be hearing it before things spin and people get nervous and feel like they have to get this tutor and this.
Like, what?
Right, and put their kids in a class they shouldn't be in.
Or don't take a lunch, you know, that's always a big one. Don't take a lunch, especially with mental health and everything. But there are some kids who really don't want to take a lunch. And, you know, so you kind of have to hold those parents' hands and be like, it's okay. You know, my kid didn't take lunch and like they survived. So I think in conjunction with our experts, you know, I don't think that the parents should just be running amok. I don't think the parents should just be running amok and saying everything, but I think in conjunction with, you know, our counselors, I think it would be helpful, you know, just to have a couple seasoned parents with older kids.
Maybe some students, too, to talk about their experience.
Students with IEPs, students, you know, that play a lot of sports, you know, students with different situations.
Yeah, and I think that some sort of communication, maybe even in the spring of ninth grade, about what's coming up in 10th grade might be helpful for parents who aren't sure. And there's a big, I think, lots of discussions, now that I've just lived through it with the first time, 10th grader, lots of discussions that happen at sort of those spring cocktail parties, like are you getting the PSAT book for the summer? Things like that, like do I need that? And then there's people who are like, wait, there's a PSAT in 10th grade. So I think just when we look at it, so review of the whole process, right? All four years, how is that looking for kids? What does it look like? And where could we, you know, make recommendations or find out from other people?
Can I just interrupt with that? When I say looking at all four years, I'm talking about like if you have an interest in business or something, and you know, and you're in ninth grade and you know that's what you want to do. A lot of colleges require that you take calculus senior year. So you have to look at the four years as a whole, you know, and say, okay, this is my track. You know, if I'm not taking algebra in eighth grade, then I'm going to need to do something at some point to make sure that I can take calculus senior year because that's what the colleges want to see.
Right, and you need to know that before, right.
And that's, yeah, that's a thing that, you know, they tell you on the college tour, you know, which you only find out from someone who's been on college tours.
Okay, so right, so I think just more communication and more maybe conversations like this where it's what did I not know so that we know where the holes are? Because sometimes it's that like curse of knowledge when you're living in it. You think, well, everyone knows that, but maybe everyone doesn't know. Or maybe, and I'm sure this is the case, Mona, you send a bunch of emails and invite people to meetings, and people still don't know. And I, that is also to be recognized, right? I know that that's a big problem all schools have, right? Is that even over-communicating, people misinformation. So, you know, is it, you know, requiring, just like the code of conduct meeting is required for athletes, is the 10th grade college meeting required for families? Should you have to sign in QR code, perhaps, right? I mean, this is-
I know, I thought of that.
Education first, right?
When we were talking about this the last time, I was thinking, okay, we make people come to the code of conduct meeting, but they don't come to some of these other things where the information is so helpful.
Kids come to that, don't come, some kids were there, so.
I know, I'm like, can we require it?
Yes. Yeah, so we'll, we'll put it in our board goal, but yeah, and we'll look to Mona. But I think any way we can support you with getting people to listen and read the good information that you send out, too, is part of what we're here to help with.
And I just want to say that the guidance department is doing a fantastic job. This is not, you know, a deficit or anything, it's just there are just some things that are-
No, we're not saying that.
You know, parents tell other parent, people, parents talk, you know? And there's just some things that parents know that, you know, that they just find out.
Would, for sharing out information on this, I'm thinking, could we do something where it's part of like a report at a board meetings? Like a certain components of this, where we share out information that's critical? Or is, you know, just a report on how we're achieving this goal, or?
Yeah, I think that's all of the goals that we have should be reported on as the work is being done.
Okay, great.
I just want to, on this one item, I just want to make sure, and I think we said this already, but this isn't just focused on parents, right? And I think the, the interaction with the students has to increase as well because they're, even when we spoke to our children, like they sometimes have ideas in their head about what they think they need to do. And so I think an earlier conversation with them about how many APs are appropriate or how many no-lunch years are appropriate has to happen maybe a little earlier as well. So I think that was part of it.
I sent an email to Mr. Dambuski today that said, I heard this from a teenager, so it's probably not true. Can you tell me what the truth is? Yeah, so, right, the kids should have some ownership and accountability and agency over themselves. So that's a great, and I think they do, but more and more of that, I think, is-
I think it fits with what Lisa was saying.
A great addition, thank you, yeah.
So this information we're being is going to be shared out at different points? The information will be shared out at different points throughout the year. Are we going to schedule a work session on this as well or at this time? What's your thoughts?
I mean, I think we need to dedicate some time to this. I do think that this could go later into the spring. There's some other things that would come sooner. And this could also be a discussion item at a board meeting, too. So as far as timing.
I mean, scheduling for, happens in, you know, kids are thinking about it in December and January. So if we can't get it by then-
I think this year is, it's looking to next year.
Then there's no rush.
It's looking to next year, that's what I think at this point. So, I mean, college applications are due next week. And the, to your point, courses are going to be selected in just a couple of months, so.
So we could report on some, those along the way.
Yeah, good. So what I think would be good is to put in there maybe late spring. And as we go through the rest of these goals, we can go back and decide what that, that month is because we've got three more to go or four more to go. And sorry, it's behind me. Thank you. And.
Maybe periodic updates, maybe even in the summer. I mean, we still could.
Yes.
Even push that one out.
At some point, I don't think you'd want it to be in the summer, though, because we are talking about potentially helping to communicate things at least to ninth grade families about what's coming up in the fall. But even if it was in a discussion section of, and I know things get, it's always busy. There's always so much to talk about at board meetings. But in a spring board meeting, perhaps, to start the discussion there about things that should get going quickly, and then maybe a summer. You know, maybe there's, maybe we need a retreat for the last few things. The other thing is, though, that, and one of our goals is here, the board will turn, have new members again, or not, in July. So, that's something else just to keep in mind, that these board goals really should be for this year through June 30. And then it's to be reviewed again. So, the next one is to create a strategic hiring and retention plan. And this really came out of, partially out of a conversation you and I had, Jill, about how we can support you in making sure that there's full sign-off and buy-in on any senior administrative position that is, you know, going to be put into the budget and then hired when potentially you have new board members who weren't part of the conversation before. So, with a strategic hiring plan, but also retention plan, which would create less need, maybe, for strategic hiring. We think it's a way that we can support you in your work and make sure you have the backing of the board as you go into hiring season.
Yeah. So, one of the things, just in thinking about this, and we've talked about it through the budget, and really talking about really changing the budget process, so you can really see all the positions a little more clearly within the budget. So, we could put that in place, where we have obviously an estimate of, you know, how many teacher aides, how many classroom teacher positions at that point in time. We, I mean, we do class size updates more so in the spring, but, you know, we can move that up a little bit. And then, you know, through the budget process. And then if there are new positions to be added, you know, we have a full presentation on those positions, not just, you know, putting your hand up, yes, the budget, and we get the community to vote for it. So, I'm happy to, you know, do a presentation on that.
That would be great. And, you know, I think looking at who we already have in positions and specifically what duties are being taken care of and where you have need would be helpful. Mapping out, I know there's still a need for support staff positions. So, mapping that out to make sure our administration can really be successful with the proper supports. You know, taking a look at security staffing is on here. Planning for classroom teachers alongside of, alongside of the classroom study was in our notes. And putting in place a plan for standardized exit interviews for all school employees who leave their positions.
That's important.
Really, really important. And it's something that's come up. But since there's not really a plan in place for that, we've never been able to capture those. And even though we've requested them, so I think we need a, an actual plan for that, how it's handled. And then it needs to be followed.
And didn't we talk about possibly having, I think it was actually NIS, the woman from NISBA had mentioned that some schools do like a culture survey through their teachers, right?
Rate the, rate the culture is in my notes.
Yes, she did, yes. That's a great suggestion.
I think that's an important part of this. And again, it's not, I think a number in isolation doesn't tell you much. But if we're looking at these things as long-term incremental, it's important to know whether things are getting better or worse or the same. It helps identify whether turnover relates to just people looking for more money or are they looking for a better experience? We all talk about wanting to be like the best place to work. I think that's what everybody's here for, so that would help us make sure that that's happening. And then the other thing I would say, and I think, so Jill, when you mentioned like thinking or looking at a higher level in the budgeting process, I think part of that would be, I'm asking maybe, is it benchmarking to other districts of similar size? Is that possible to see like, how many people are dedicated to this broad function or that broad function? It's, might not be apples and oranges.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not going to always be apples and oranges. It's just hard. But, I mean, we certainly can put together, you know, as much information as we can share with you during that time. And then, you know, especially when you're looking at some of the comparative districts, and we've talked about that. So, they have one dedicated person for mathematics, you know, or they have an elementary person for this. But again, class, district size matters and, you know, layers, all that comes into play.
Yeah. But I think that would help, benchmarking would help us understand, like, if, you know, if we have three times as many administrators on a certain function, then maybe we have to say, is that right or not? I think, you're laughing, because I know you know that's not true, but.
I wish that were the case. And you see Mona's eyes, so you better move from that seat right now.
I feel laser beams on me right now.
Yes, I was just going to say, don't turn around.
The last thing on this, and sorry to move this along, but the last thing on this is just a review of the board's involvement in the personnel search process was on here. And that's something that's been an ongoing conversation that we're having. So, I think it's important to keep that in this, in this goal, too. And originally, we had timing complete by March, because we want to be able to.
Part of the budget.
Support, right, this. So, I'm wondering if we want to, and this is how we end up with very long meetings, but combine one of those work sessions.
In March, we were saying we were doing class size study.
Or we could do one in February. We could do a February work session for this. How does everyone feel about a, February's a little tricky, because you all, not me, because I work in an independent school in Manhattan, but you all have that February break. I'll be around.
I'm here.
Okay. So, I know February can get a little busy, but February work session.
It's got to be February.
Okay. So, let's do February. And we'll pick a date for that. So, identify priorities for the budget. And Christine, this, we were going to work with you to come up with a date for that. I know it's like now, right? But.
Yes, I'm about to kick off the budget process next week, at least from my office side.
I'm sure. I'm sure. So, you know, it was focus on staffing and curricular enhancements. Review of areas where increased funds would, would enhance student experience. You know, looking at things that come up all the time, theater, art, robotics, after-school clubs, the club sports, in addition to, you know, core academics and staffing. So, those are areas that the community has really voiced an interest in seeing more of a commitment to. So, I think that's important that we look into that.
Yeah. So, perhaps we could put this on a board agenda, though, to really drill down on this a little bit more. So, if we are looking at budgetary needs and, you know, where do you want to make those enhancements? And then, you know, through the budget process, and Christine could speak to this. You know, we are talking about a very tight budget right now, and so we really would need to know those priorities, especially with just some of our transportation costs and some of those other things really increasing.
Yep. So, I know, I think I heard in prior meetings, we build bottom up on budget. Is that right?
Basically, we do a rollover budget. So, that which we know, we roll over. That's what, that what we don't know, we make decisions and estimates at the beginning of the process. Let's say, for example, transportation, we know we have to go out to bid. We get information from recent bids that might have gone out and increases that other districts are seeing and knowing what we know about, you know, we try and make an educated decision there and refine it as the budget process develops. When we say rollover budget, it's because a lot of the things are already known. Let's say our collective bargaining agreements are intact, which is a big piece. And if we're not going to have a collective bargaining agreement intact, we have to decide. I say decide, like, we, the board, like, what we're going to do there, what we're going to build into the budget. And, and, you know, and that becomes part of the negotiation process. So, and so we roll the budget over, and information comes out in different times during the budget process, like health insurance costs increase. And we only know that for six months of the year when we budget, when we budget, because the second six months of the year when we build a budget doesn't come out for a year later. We don't know increases for retirement system. But so, all of these things, we, we send out a rollover budget. Usually that comes out in February with the board, just to give you an idea, is when we're sharing it. And at that point after February, we're doing revisions. So, even things like, you know, it becomes, we know expenses before we know revenue. That's important to know. Like, we know expenses and some of that information before we know state aid. And then we're also working on our tax cap calculation. That really becomes a linchpin for us to determine, since we're 96% supported by the tax levy, it gives us an idea of how much additional revenue we're going to have to support the next year's budget.
Christine, would it be beneficial to you, then, if we added this to the November board meeting as a topic of discussion? Because it sounds like you need information sooner rather than later. But I also don't know if that's too soon. It's a late, it's a little bit later in the month because of Election Day.
It's November 12th or 14th, I think, we're meeting it.
Yeah. Two days later is the vote, so it's kind of going to be a very busy, you know, that's going to be a very busy week.
Very busy time for you. So, yeah.
My, my reason for asking is, I can only speak for myself, but seeing one budget won't necessarily be helpful. I think seeing a budget that shows what we recommend, what would, like, what would it look like if we said just stay flat to last year versus what if we had every single thing we wanted? But different scenarios, because understanding like what the trade-offs are is going to be important, especially because we're sitting here talking about goals. So, saying, you know, coming in and saying, oh, we don't want, we don't want to see a big increase in the budget. But then the impact of that could be not supporting the things we just agreed to as goals. Like, I think that's important to know. So, we could talk about like what that looks like, but instead of.
Would you be interested in a budget drivers slash overview process of how the budget interacts together? So, there's, there's a couple of budget drivers that literally drive a tremendous amount of the budget process?
Well, I think we'll get that, right?
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's more.
I like what you're saying.
It's more, if you say that because pensions and contracted.
Those are the drivers, yeah.
Raises and everything else are going up X amount, and we don't want to go up more than that, like, what else has to be done, right? So, it doesn't mean we're going to do it. But I think to have an informed conversation as a board, we have to know those trade-offs between what if we don't want to go.
It almost, Bill, are you saying it's almost like what we did with CVA? Like, if we do this route or this route, right? And we can look at the differences. Yeah.
Right. I think, Alex, you just said something about November, though. If we could start the discussion of things that you're considering.
That's what I'm thinking, just things we're considering.
This is not for November. This is.
Right. But, you know, Christine wouldn't have to do a presentation.
Right. The presentation could certainly be, you know, January or December, maybe, because February really is the beginning of the.
Yes. If we wanted to add something, the normal budget process, I will say here starts in February and culminates with the election in May. And pretty much every meeting in between, we have numerous presentations, you remember, that are, that are happening. I would say January would be the time that we would start that conversation.
So, maybe we start the discussion, then, at our November meeting, sort of like a wish list.
Absolutely.
And so, that way, when you, I love this idea of having the three budgets and the budget that shows us what it would take to get everything. And that's what we did with class size, too, right? Like, here's what it will cost to get these teachers, and we, we were able to figure it out. So, I, I think that would be really helpful. So, sorry, Heather, do you have that? We're talking like a, you're good, okay.
That will be one of the things that we will first have to discuss. Like, what's, those positions, are we going to build them into the next year's budget?
Okay, great. So, we're comfortable saying, then, with this goal, that we're going to start the discussion in November. We're going to have it on an agenda for January. And that way, by February, when we're starting to really talk about the budget, we're all on the same page. Sound good to everyone?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Last goal, the last goal was to implement a year-end review of board goal achievement. Because if we're going to set metrics for everything else, we should take a look at ourselves, right? So, the board will outline a plan for a year-end review of work completed. This is also an awful lot of extra work we've just given ourselves. So, we'll see if that's a reasonable amount of work for board goals or if next year the board wants to look at less or more for board goals. The document will include an exit ticket from each board member on what was accomplished and what still needs to be done, along with improvements on BOE work for the next year and recommendations for goals. This will create more of a consistency of work year to year, as well as accountability for the board to accomplish yearly goals. So, does anyone have anything to add to that? Go, Bill.
No, no.
Hold us accountable, Bill.
I mean, metrics-wise, I would love to measure our engagement. I don't know how you do that, but certainly being present here is an important part. So, I don't know if we can, you know.
Like, survey the community on our engagement or?
Or.
Or like an attendance sheet?
I don't want to make it just attendance, because there's a lot of meetings and nobody could make every single one. It's impossible. But, you know, like, how are we, are we engaged when we show up? You know, we bringing things? I don't know how you measure that, though. I'm throwing that out as an idea.
Okay. So, I'm hearing a few things, which is like our engagement with whether or not people are.
With each other.
Engaging with us.
Yeah.
But also, how are we engaging with the meeting?
With our role as a board member. Yeah.
Oh, I like that. Okay. So, maybe like a little self-reflection.
Yeah.
Maybe that could be included in the feedback when we give our exit ticket.
Yes. Here's how I feel I contributed and what else I could have done and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I could have done less.
Yeah. I'm happy to let other people say that about us, but I don't know how you do that.
Right. Oh, to see if other people, yeah. Okay.
So.
All right. Well, maybe, so. Anyone else have a suggestion? Lisa Smith, no? I'm putting you on the spot. No, not Lisa.
Like, make it like a check mark every time you say something at a meeting, like, add them up.
Our meetings are going to be so long, though, because we're competitive. Now I want to win that.
Then we'll be here, we'll be here till one in the morning.
Right. We're going to be here all week.
That's not a good idea. I'm teasing.
This is the only drawback to open meeting.
Please be mindful of community guidelines, Kate. She said that's not a good idea.
I don't think it's a good idea either. So, I agree with you.
We all collectively agree. That's not how we're going to handle it. But I, I like that suggestion. Maybe we can continue to talk about that. But I think in general, we're in agreement that we need to put in place a year-end review and commit to it, commit to saying, look, you know, for goals one, three, and four, we, we really did it, but, you know, goal two, we, we lost our momentum, or whatever it may be, you know? So, I, I think that it's worthwhile that, knowing that we're going to have a check-in on it, it will keep us on, on target. And again, if we're asking everyone else to be accountable, we should be as well. The other thing I've noticed, and only my second year on this board, but having been on numerous boards, is one of the problems is sometimes work is done again and again and again, because there's not continuity from board to board, right? Or things that are, big projects are sort of missed. So, I think this will help to keep, keep everyone informed. All right. Should we accomplish our?
I think so.
Everyone's comfortable with this, with our goals? So, we, what we're going to do is Heather's going to type it all up. And then procedurally, help me out, Jill, do we bring it to the next board meeting to vote on this? Or we've already adopted our goals, so we're good?
So, you know, all of these items are really just conversation pieces and things that, you know, we're going to take notes on and report back out on. So, they really just, I mean, you're happy to pub, you can publish it, but it's not something you have to vote on.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good.
All right. Shall we move on to district goals?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so similar to the Board of Education, and, you know, also, um, knowing that, you know, we focus on certain pillars throughout the year. Student achievement obviously is a priority for us, and, um, so improving student achievement across all grades and disciplines is really obviously the goal, and Alex, as you read your remarks earlier in, in the board meeting. But to talk about, the leadership team met over the summer to really talk about student achievement and reflect on where we made gains from last year, um, some of the work that, um, we've been doing with our teachers and staff, and then more so, I think what you'll notice in the student achievement goals this year is a, a greater focus on individual students. And so when we even talk about district results, right, we're sometimes talking about the grade, but we really want to spend a little more time on data-driven instruction and having conversations about individual students. So for example, having strategy groups that work towards specific student goals at the elementary level. So some of those goals include fostering a culture of continuous improvement through a focus on positive sense of self, self-reflection, growth mindset, and independence. We really think this is important when we talk with children, I'm sorry, Jill, keep going, um, where they really feel good about their learning and, you know, they want to take risks, they also are being encouraged and just feel good about coming to school. So that's really important to us. But what goes along with that is also making sure they have clear direction, what is it that I'm supposed to be learning, why am I learning this? And, um, so we're doing some work on focus and clarity of instruction and embedding clear learning intentions, and really having students, um, join the conversation in that success criteria, um, so where they could have more use of rubrics. So what are the expectations? Like, how is this being measured? Do I really know what the final product really should look like in this, and where's the benchmark for that? So if this is a four, do I have a sample of that? Do I, if this product is, you know, I'm just progressing toward that, and that's fine, right? We want students to actually be honest with themselves, well, I haven't achieved this, and we say not yet, and so they're working toward that. We talk a little bit about utilize data to drive instructional practices, I just spoke about that, but, you know, we have, we really want teachers to take advantage of the quarterly review sessions, and you're seeing a little bit more of that on the board agendas. That is something that we brought in two years ago, and, you know, we talk about the budget, that has been, uh, we've been paying for that through the COVID monies. So again, that's, if that's a priority and we see that as a need, and that, we want us, you know, we're going to ask the board to support that, because we know that students who can take a little more time to sit back and review that material, that's maybe needs, you know, more than forty-five minutes, or it's some, a topic that students struggled with. So again, those quarterly review sessions, PD for staff, on actually, how do you review data? So some teachers, you know, are asking for more information of, how do I interpret some of these reports? So that's important, that they understand how to interpret the reports. And Mr. Dambuski and Ms. Locutuda, they spent a lot of time in the fall sharing our results, showing some of those reports that we get from state assessments, but it's also on local assessments. Like, how do you compare that from teacher to teacher and have conversations? So data meetings, you know, we have a lot of assessments, um, we want to spend some time even sharing with parents, what do the assessments mean? And then how do they use those? So, do you understand your child's Fanta's and Pennell assessment? Do you understand the STAR assessment? For the first time this year, we're going to send home the STAR assessment parent reports, and we really feel that's important, that parents really see, they talk about it at parent-teacher conferences, but do, you haven't, parents haven't really gotten a copy of that. And so we want to encourage that. That makes some teachers anxious, because they need to understand it and then be able to articulate that. And sometimes that data doesn't always triangulate with, you know, the, the child's earning nineties in math, but then they struggled on the STAR assessment. So is it a one-time struggle, or is it something that we're seeing as a trend? And so how to have those conversations with parents. So going over those, some of those things, and our principals have actually started to do a little bit, a little of that at the PTG meetings already. Um, we're going to spend some time at the CPC meeting tomorrow. Nicole Schimpf is here with us tonight, but, you know, talking about how do we provide supports for kids who might not meeting those benchmarks yet as well. So our literacy PD is very, very focused on strategy group, strategy groups. We've embarked on a really terrific journey with Jen Sarovalo's work, and our teachers on Superintendent's Conference Day are going to work on that, and again, that's focusing on the student as opposed to the unit. Horizontal and vertical articulation, I think you mentioned that earlier in some of the board goals, but what are the, you know, how are we having those conversations, particularly from sixth to seventh grade and transition year, which is always difficult for kids, no matter what, just moving to a different building and routines? But then how do we have those conversations when those teachers aren't, you know, connected on a daily basis? So we find that's really important. We know even just with doing the new math, uh, the accelerated math this year, some of the parents are a little frustrated, they're like, this is really hard, like, this is harder than I thought, and yet our kids are really performing well in sixth grade, but is there that, you know, conversation about what the expectations are? And so having the conversation both ways. We want to work on conversation between the AAS providers, so the people who are providing the academic intervention services, we've, and this is really important, and we're struggling here a little bit, always time is, you know, I think you, some of you sat on the PD, on the curriculum committee, where teachers want more time, so how do you build in that time? But if the teacher is providing the remediation, doesn't have time to talk to the classroom teacher, and then so how do you have, and you do the, you work, this is your role every day, but how do you have that articulation? And then where do we build in the time? So I'm not going to say we have all the answers to these things, but these are important conversations that the building principals are having. Each building principal is creating a strategic plan to meet these goals and to target some of these things. Well, in Lloyd Harbor, it might be just for third grade, certain goals, and in other building, it might be more of a target for fourth and fifth grade, it might be, look different in each, in each building plan. But some of these things are consistent. Professional learning, our AP collegial circles, we are embarking on a fall session this year. We had started that last year in the spring, in actually the winter, February. The teachers from the thirty-something districts that joined us asked that we continue that, and I think that's really critical work. And a lot of our teachers cannot spend a week in the summer attending some of these institutes, and so we're really pleased that they want to join the conversation and that they're finding, um, rewards, I want to say, just having conversations with colleagues and sharing best practices. So we're starting that in the fall, there's eight, I think, eight, eight sessions that we're running on November fourteenth, okay? Thirteen and seventeen, so right around the vote. So we got a lot going on that week, and I think we have a board meeting that week, too, so, um, and then site visits to neighboring school districts. So it's really important that our teachers get out, and we're doing...
Have you done that before?
So we actually started it, um, so our AP, our new course, AP Capstone, Mr. Dambuski and the teacher actually just visited another district to just really talk about that, and that's really important, because you, people who have already started that course and have said, you know, don't do this, or weed that out, or, you know, target this, you know, you want to learn from their mistakes, but also just planning ahead for our AP research class. And so that takes time, and then really, it's very important that you select the right teacher for some of these courses, and who wants to do it, and who really has that more collaborative approach and flexibility in their teaching. So some of those things in the instruction, so relevant professional learning, identify for practices to differentiate the instruction, and, um, these are conversations. So we have Superintendent's Conference Day coming up on, on November seventh, so these are built into that, and in listening to our teachers who provide a survey to, you know, what could help them in their professional learning, so some of the time on Superintendent's Conference Day is targeted towards some of these items right here on this list, particularly the data conversations. And then there's about an hour and a half, hour and fifteen minutes, depending if you have to travel to a location, of time for teachers to select things that they want to work on individually and with a colleague, and so they can pick those things. So, important. We talk about culture and climate, next.
Jill, before we move on to the next slide. We were discussing earlier how our board goals could help, help with, support your district goals, and with regard to this third, um, point about ensuring horizontal and vertical articulation in the curriculum, I, for the past couple of years, I believe that that one's been a consistent one, that's been on there, and I was just wondering, and thought it would be good for the board discuss, to discuss maybe if we received periodic updates on the curriculum, and we had opportunities to ask questions along the way, we could perhaps have a dialogue to ensure that the curriculum is, you know, fitting the needs of the students, and what we have is working. So that may be something that we would want to look into periodically.
Yeah, if you're going to have to give me a little more specifics on that, when you, what you're looking for, and then we can share some of that.
And share.
So, um, on this first goal, um, so this looks really good. I, I agree with Heather, um, there should be a tie-in, which, like, we can't have goals without your support, and I think you can't have goals with our support, so I see this one very tied to our goal of like improving ranking and performance. My, my only question, not for tonight, is, um, to the extent you can identify metrics, that would be helpful, like something like the, um, um, I forgot the name of it, but the, the AP collaborative circles is like great, where if we could measure like our participation as well as our leadership in it, that would be really helpful to see if we're doing better or worse compared to prior years, but I think if you think through these and think where can we measure how we're doing, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I was thinking actually to what Heather just said, and then what you said, Bill, as, um, that, you know, and the example you gave, Jill, the sixth to seventh grade, and how that accelerated math is going, like, that might be an interesting...
Topic, right, so if you give me the topic, I'm happy to, to share out particularly...
Yeah, I think there's particular interest in that, because it's a new program.
Could that potentially be a program that gets tweaked for what the, you know, I mean, it's new, so obviously the first time you do anything, there is possibility where you're like, this didn't work, this worked, is there...
Right, so we ask teachers to kind of take data on that, you know, what's working, if they have to make adjustments, and then where you'll really see the adjustments, the needed adjustments, would be some curriculum writing, where the board approves those projects, where people are saying we need to spend more time developing like this unit, or some more preparatory skills for end of sixth grade, going into, you know, so things like that, and that's really where...
And the teachers would be writing that curriculum, like a homegrown type, for this class, yeah.
I mean, like, don't get me wrong, we have instructional resources, and we might have to look for some other instructional resources, but, you know, if a teacher is identifying a gap, typically that's homegrown.
Okay.
But yeah, if you let us know certain topics and things like that, but certainly that's a new program, and we'd actually appreciate sharing out some of that information. You know, we spend a lot of time developing these things, you know, the Jen Sarovalo work is, you know...
Is that new for us this year?
We started in the spring of last year. The training was done with all the administrators first, so we put a halt on PD instruction for the teachers, so that there was a shared vision amongst the leadership team and a shared understanding of the goals of this. And that's something I think that was missing in the past, it's like we embark on this, we're all excited about this, but we really need to take a step back and say, what's our shared vision, and what's the work that we are identifying? Really important, and look, I could talk about this all night, but one of the important things is that we did walkthroughs of all the teachers' classrooms, and it wasn't that, you know, Dr. Burns did his building, Mrs. Massimo went with Dr. Burns and the consultants and Jen and myself, and we walked through everybody's classrooms and looked for certain things, and then collected that data to say, what are we noticing, what are we missing? So sometimes these things aren't always like, I want to say specifically measurable, but like it's measurable and we're noticing these things aren't, or like every kid's writing the same story. So are kids getting voice and choice, right? So that's measurable, and that we see a change, and that children are getting choice, and we're not seeing the same essay written by every kid, and it has the same starter sentence. You know, those are things like that are more, I guess, you know, conversations that we can have, and certainly we can share that, but it's not always a number, I want to say.
We're doing her whole literacy, like reading and writing, right?
Um, right now, no.
No?
We're like, yeah, we're just starting with the reading.
With the reading, okay.
Yeah, 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 we could not embark on that at this point, yeah.
I didn't know, I, which one?
Yeah, yeah, I'm like, oh, no.
No, I'm happy to start with the reading.
I'll be getting arrows shot at me, not just laser beams.
I'm assuming the new literacy coach has a big role in that, right?
So, um, we have our literacy coach working with grades three through six, and then we have the consultants from the agency. And, um, but happy to do period updates on some of our curriculum initiatives, I think it's important that the board hear some of these things, so.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, um, culture and climate, really important, um, we want to promote activities that foster environment where students and staff feel connected. We do lots of great things in this community to really make sure, you know, students are energized and feel connected, and parents can come back to school, so it says students and staff, and probably should say families as well, but, um, you know, our sports night for, that we started last year, just with, okay, so everybody thinks it was for the kids, but that was really a lot for the teachers, too. And I know it sounds crazy, they're running around doing, uh, you know, field day-like games, but it is building a team, it is that everybody was in the cafeteria before we had dinner served for everybody, and, you know, there was some healthy competition. People don't get to see each other all the time, yes, we do Superintendent's Conference Day, but they're there to work. So those are kind of activities, I'll move along, Alex. CSH Unites.
Our timekeeper, sorry, Jill and I planned out how much time everything would take.
CSH Unites, you see, um, a new emblem that was created by one of our, our teachers that really is, um, placed on certain district initiatives, that says, we want to join together as a district. So you saw Unit EBA, things along those lines, and then, you know, we are publishing those things and celebrating as a community, because it is important to celebrate homecoming, things along those lines. Our curriculum night, where, it's not going to be a STEAM night this year, but it's going to be more, include the humanities piece, so it's going to be more of an academic fair that includes STEAM and then some other topics. So that embraces, again, district goals. Lisa's on the committee. We embed opportunities to celebrate, you know, through the Harvard Highlights websites, we want to continue that work. I think we are, really do a great job in terms of our communication, sometimes it's voluminous at times, and then other times, you know, we, we could tweak that a little bit, but I feel like there's a lot for parents to read, so that is something that we should evaluate, and, you know, Mrs. Heck does the guidance light, and it's chock full of information, but then we're saying people are missing things. So we could reflect on if we are getting this information out, but people aren't reading it, so how do we get the information out in different ways?
Can we measure how many people actually click through to, to read the documents?
Yeah, I think we can measure that.
You can see that, right? Yeah.
Because maybe then we can adjust.
I mean, you wouldn't know, like, how many people, like, if you, like, went on three times, but certainly something we could take a look at. I know, right? But like Mrs. Heck noticed this year at the tenth grade, that there was greater participation than last year, significant, there was more students, and so that's important. Mona, you want to say something?
Yeah, I do, thank you. Yeah, um, you, obviously all the feedback is, is so important, because we're putting the information out, and we want to make sure it's landing, and it's being received, and it's being not only received, but then used and understood and, and personalized for the student and family. And we, we are continually, you know, trying to improve not only our communication tools, but our resources and our programs and things like that. And I just wanted to go back to something, Bill, that you said earlier, about the students and them understanding and making choices. So we've been increasing our classroom sessions for students. We include that information in our guidance light, so that families know when the students have been sort of seen by the counselors in that group setting. And one thing we did last year, and we're continuing it this year, and expanding on it, is in tenth grade, we've increased our classroom sessions to include, um, prior to their course selection process, the time on task for a lot of these courses. Mr. Dambuski spent a lot of time identifying by course how many hours per week assignments, you know, would take for individual courses, particularly our highest level courses across the board. We then went into the classrooms and conducted a session with tenth grade students, so they could work on really analyzing these, you know, made-up students using a profile of their activities, their interests, their goals, as well as the course opportunities that were available to them. And the students really got into it, they, oh, he, he's overextended, he shouldn't do this, we know they have to balance, and it was great, because they all of a sudden really like owned these kids that, that we completely made up. But then when they went into their course selection process, the counselors anecdotally reported back and said, it was great, because these students really thought about things that they hadn't seen them thinking about in the past. So we're extending that with, continuing that with tenth grade, we're extending that to ninth grade in a little bit of a different way this year. So, you know, again, this feedback is really helpful, because it continues to help us tweak, just tweak and plan and grow the program. help us tweak, just tweak and plan and grow the program. We also, of course, as you know, have a very new counseling team. Not new counselors, fortunately, we're very fortunate to get experienced counselors, but a new team here in Colesbury Harbor. So, you know, we're continuing to work on it, but we certainly want to know, we're putting a lot of information out, how, how is it landing and how is it being received?
Right, so.
Oh, just to respond to that, because that sounds like a very helpful tool for the students when they're choosing their classes. If I could even just suggest going, bringing it to them in eighth grade, you know, just because once they start choosing their classes for ninth grade, that's when they start choosing the honors and the, you know, and they can kind of add up all of that time and realize. I, I think that's, I think that's great.
Yeah, and Mrs. Pickering meets the students in small groups throughout the school year because as I mentioned at the 10th grade night, there's a lot of information that we gave to families that night. And if we, we love that the students came out, but we try to sort of give them little pieces as we go. And in eighth grade in particular, she's working with students throughout the entire, both seventh and eighth grade, in small groups and trying to prepare them, talking to them about their transcript, this is what it looks like, this is what will be on it, this is, you know, how you plan your coursework, how much time. So she's doing a lot of those activities, and it's great. And like I said, when they're really in the thick of it in high school, that's when it becomes real to them.
Yeah, we did, Ms. Heck and I spoke about, you know, perhaps a different eighth grade parent night, just to really kind of engage parents a little bit more. Maybe it's a little overwhelming, you know, just all in one shot. And so how do we have like, just different opportunities for them to come? So again, those are, you know, some of the communication pieces.
I, I just had one, it's really a comment more than a question. I know Mr. Dambuski had a goal of continuing to improve the progress reports, but I think that would be a great thing under this goal where, you know, at the high school level, sometimes the feedback is a little too canned, and so I think students getting a little better feedback about where they're doing well or not doing well, even more importantly, would be great under this, so.
And I know Mr. Dambuski, since the past two years, has been really working on that with staff, and so was, has assistant principals, but I appreciate the feedback. Again, you know, so working on, you know, whether it's publications or in-person meetings, things along those lines, connecting parents and students. Positive mental health, we've spoken about that quite a bit, even as we started this school year. So with the new health curriculum environment, you know, where there's awareness and then resources. And so the new mental health curriculum, we can report out how that's going and that whole new program. Again, you know, we talk about staffing, the wellness counselor was such a critical ad two years ago, and really having that person, and they're doing some of the push-in lessons and things like that. And then we have a new social worker this year is really trying to draw kids in with very different ways and things like that to the Nest and all those locations. And I mean, we could report out on lots of good stuff, so, but it's important that we are focusing on this. Parent nights and things along those lines, we've had some parent workshops that the special education department has put in, you know, sometimes those are during the day, sometimes they've been in the evening, but we'd like to continue that. So these are obviously multi-year goals for us. The curriculum represents the community, this is always something that we try to work toward, and book material selections, multiple perspectives, our international nights, which is so well-attended, and our cultural celebrations at the elementary level, particularly in third grade. So these are some of the things, again, that, you know, we want to attend to. And I think that's probably, that goal's probably an easier goal because you see it a lot, right, through our communications and things like that, to achieve engagement, collaboration, communication, again, ensure positive communication to all stakeholders through media outlets, continue to facilitate and organize events that strengthen the community. I talked about the District Unite events. More streamlined communication for parents and staff, again, how do we do this better? And then collect community feedback to inform practices and programs, and that's really critical. So even if we did an exit ticket at the end of some of our guidance nights, that might be helpful, or even some of our, even CPC meetings, what do you need more information about? What do you not need, you know, are we talking too much? Are we talking not enough about the topics you want? So that's important, we could do that.
The other thing that actually I mentioned at a PTG meeting the other day, but is probably good for CPC too, is people have said they love that these meetings are recorded because they're able to watch them and they can attend. And so much information is given out at CPC meetings and they're during the day. It would be so helpful, I think, to people if those were recorded and people could watch them.
I'll share that with the leadership, and, you know, they do their report out, they kind of sit here and do their report out of their PTG events.
It's the best.
And then they have a speaker sometimes, or a lot of times it's just a Q and A with me and my team. So I'll speak to them about that. Safety and security, really a critical area that we're spending a lot of time on is to create, obviously, that safe learning environment for students and staff. So we really are focusing on additional security protocols, district-wide, making sure those are consistently implemented. We are going to evaluate district equipment and technology needs, so we did a presentation for the board last spring. Mr. Clements has been reporting out on some of that through his safety and security meetings, just in terms of, you know, where he is in the discovery process. So for example, the Rave app was an item that was on that, and then just trying to work on the implementation of that. Delineate security responsibilities and expectations, that's definitely something that needs to be tweaked a bit. Investigate the use of armed guards, so if that's a topic the Board of Education wants to entertain, again, you know, that would be discussion here at the table. Ensure timely training for all staff. So we are working with a security firm and to implement a two-day-a-week security consultant, and that's really where we lean on them. And also, we're partnering with Homeland Security, which is an offshoot of Suffolk County Police Department. They're going to do an assessment of our procedures and then try to do a training exercise that's kind of like real-time. And those are probably the most critical for us, right? It's, yes, we're doing the locked-end drills and it's important for our staff. Covert Investigations and Security, that's the name of the firm. They met with our security team and got some great feedback from them. And so, you know, we're really, again, that would be a conversation for the board, you know, we're going to try to implement the two-day-a-week this year, and then maybe make some recommendations going forward, what our needs may be. But I wouldn't have that, and again, I know you're going to need that for budget, budgeting. But, you know, there's some items on, that we talked about, the Rave app, the to-go bags, our security booths, is that something? I know Christine has that on the Capitol Project Committee, to consider that there. The door jar system was talked about at the safety meeting on Monday. Do we need some vehicles? You know, things, maybe golf carts might help too, believe it or not, some golf carts. We have big facilities, and sometimes that's helpful.
So I noticed this was very focused on physical security, plant security. I, I know Mr. Monastero focuses a lot on cybersecurity, but I don't see that highlighted here. Is it possible?
No, we actually, I, I actually have it in the Friday notes to go home for you, in the Friday notes, but I'm happy to have a conversation here at the board level. I'm going to say that we, our systems are excellent in terms of where we are, so I think it's more of just a report so you have a better understanding. If there was something we needed to put in place, I'd be telling you, like we wouldn't be waiting.
Sorry, my goal wasn't to say it's lacking at all.
No, no, I didn't think that you were, I just want, you need more information.
Making something even that's working well part of, like, your continuing goal is helpful to make sure it's focused on, and that, I think that's an area that can never receive too much attention, so.
Yeah, so I wanted, so you'll see in the Friday notes, we're going to talk a little bit about what insurance that we have, so you have a better understanding of the insurance because you probably read some things in the paper of cyber attacks on schools.
Yes.
We are doing a phishing campaign here in the district, and then also, Mr. Monastero has many levels, you know, on our servers and things like that. It's a very long-winded document, but I'm sending it home in the Friday notes for you, just because it's current in the paper right now, and some of you are new to the board, and it's an old document in some cases, and then there's a couple new items on it. So we'll share that with you. And then if you want to have a discussion at the board level after that, after you get those documents, we can put it on the discussion portion of the meeting.
I think that's great. I also think, and tell me if, if you hear this too, from, you know, security consultants, but sometimes with security, there's things that are better not discussed in public because that prevents security risk also. So I'd like a recommendation from you or from whoever's, Consultants Joe, about what should be shared and what should not, because I know that can put you at a, a risk as well. Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, we were also discussing at our last meeting about examining whether a traffic signal is warranted at the Lawrence Hill intersection for traffic and safety reasons. So that may be something additional.
Yeah, I have that more in the Capitol Project, but I can put it on this too, Heather. I'll add, evaluate, I'll come up with some language.
Yeah, I think there was language in the letter about it, saying that it would promote safety, so I think we can.
I'll find some, some language to add here. You know, in terms of the metrics on this, I think we're gonna, it's a, we certainly can report out on the metrics and how this is working, and a security consultant at the end of the year. They certainly have quite a few recommendations for us, and we met with them today. And then, you know, it's going to be ongoing work and it's not going to be overnight, but I'm really pleased to know that many of our staff members receive them very well. And are really, it sounds like some of them, not all, but some of them are looking forward to the partnership. So I think, so again, that, I'm happy to hear that. Budget and finance planning, develop and communicate a payment plan for the Child Victims Act settlement. So again, on November 16th, we have our vote. I am going to be promoting that with our PTGs and as much as possible. Our, we have a four-page flyer going home to all community members that will, it's a newsletter that will really outline, and the board, thank you for your feedback on that document, it's really important. And the timing of that will be like at the beginning of November, so it doesn't get buried, and we get people out for that vote. Important is advocacy, and we've talked about that at the board meeting in terms of asking the state to support school districts and their efforts. And again, we can't take our foot off the pedal with trying to recoup the money from the insurance agencies. On a side note, I think the board can feel pretty good, like, you know, we are part of Long Island and the larger, and New York State, and so many people are dealing with this. We have a support group for superintendents. I know this is pathetic, right? We meet on Monday mornings via Zoom, but people are really struggling with this, and we were kind of upfront in having to settle our cases. And some of our, my colleagues are now leaning on us and sharing some of our, they've reached out to some of our attorneys, and, you know, I think the board should know that through our terrible experience, you know, other people are benefiting. So, you know, it's helpful, and a lot of people have been very appreciative of, you know, the work that this district did from the board, you know, all the way to the administrator. So we're implementing a long-range forecasting to ensure informed decisions, and Christine has spoken about this many times, and I think it's more critical than ever, just with tight budgets and with increased expenses. And so it, you know, we have long wish lists, like, the board has a long wish list. And how do we manage all those requests and still provide kids with a stellar education and our staff with the resources that they need? We compensate people appropriately, and then, you know, it's a long, but we, you need a long-range plan to be able to do that, including a facilities plan. Mr. Grillo will be speaking to the board about the five-year plan with regard to that. Create a budget, you know, for the 24th, maximize the student opportunities, tax, being mindful of the tax cap legislation. And then I would ask that the board participate in the legislative meeting that happens out in Eastern Suffolk Bocys sometime, I think it's either end of January, beginning of February, because that's where really all districts advocate for some relief in some of these areas that are state mandates. Like a lot of districts are talking about school safety and security, but how do you pay for all these things? And CVA legislation as well, and just the tax cap formula is another area.
So, but it's not to say that we want to increase taxes, right?
Yeah, no.
Thank you, Alex.
You're welcome.
No.
Because I know that's something that's come up with.
With the CVA.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, I think we collectively as a board said, it's not something that we would be in support of.
I'm just saying, these are topics that get discussed.
But I know what your superintendents, in your superintendents group, I think it did come up, right, that it would be.
That was one of the districts.
That was a suggestion that we asked for increase in taxes that was presented to us. So I think that it's, just to go on record, it's, we can participate, but we need to know what exactly the message is there, because we do not support increasing taxes, particularly, I mean, here obviously, but also for, for other districts, and as it relates to paying for the Child Victims Act.
So when we're asking for help, it's a kind of a fine line, because asking for help, in the end, means to get the money is most likely going to raise taxes. So we don't necessarily, you know, we have to watch how we.
Yeah, I just think we need to be really informed about what that meeting is, what the message is and where we stand.
Yeah, typically at the meeting, different districts get up, you get to submit questions to your legislators. So it's pretty much an open dialogue, it's not a set, like this is, you know, some different people get to ask for different things.
Oh, I see.
But that's typically in February, and everybody gets invited, and then your local legislators sit up on a panel. But I, I've attended the meeting, and I think it's a good conversation, and then to hear what other people are asking for as well. So it might not be in line.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Manage the Capitol Projects, a bond 2019, and like, this is a question, you know, a conversation that Christine and I have had, how do you manage completing that work while starting new work? And then the timelines to submit those projects to the state takes a while, and then how are you forecasting that out? And so that's really will be helpful where the board priorities are, because some of those items, like, need drawings and maps and things along those lines that take a while to collect that data, and then are, submit them at, to the state level.
Yeah, and one of the board discussions that we've had is looking at how we can perhaps work with other districts, whether or not we can work together with other schools on Long Island to get away from not using local vendors for some projects and taking things to the state level, because when we see some of the pricing on things, we, I mean, I feel like it's that, remember the $10,000 toilet at the Pentagon or wherever it was? I mean, it really, right, it's, it feels like it's, it's our fiduciary responsibility to this community to keep an eye on these things. And I, it makes me very concerned when I see some of the prices that are coming back. So that's something that we, I think, need to, to look at as well.
Okay. You want me to add, is a bullet?
I, I would think so, that, you know, we have talked about what we can do to get away from always going through Albany on everything if the prices are coming back at this, at this level. And there's other school districts who've been successful in this, so how do we partner with them and learn from them to make the most of our budget, right, and give the most back to our, our kids and to our community?
Okay, and then the last one is organizational management and efficiencies, ensure an efficient and productive organization. So we want to enhance pathways for staff to become proficient or certified in specialized classification areas of need. So for just even an example, Mrs. Heck provided a great document to some of the administrators, just looking at proficiencies of your clerical staff, and then what areas do they need to work on. And then Mr. Monastero and I met this evening to say, how do we provide some of that training to those staff members, and how do we get them to be more proficient? And instead of saying, I don't know how to do this, and then the administrator takes it on, or we just keep pushing it down the road a little bit. And so that's really an area that we know we need to grow in as well. One of the things I thought would be important, we're hiring some new clerical personnel, and I wouldn't have given them this sheet when they come in, because they probably all say I'm proficient in all of those, right? So, or at least the majority. So instead, when they're onboarded, say, what are some areas that you think that you're really doing well in and that you need some support in? And so what would you like training on before you, you know, as you walk in the door? So we're not waiting to notice that they can't do certain things or they haven't. And they're coming from different fields and different areas, so we're happy to provide that level of support. Evaluate staffing levels of instructional and non-instructional personnel, so this is, you know, really twofold. It's not just the instructional personnel, it's also the non-instructional personnel. And, you know, we know that there's, we need more help in terms of some of the clerical staffing. Our chairs and directors do not, our directors don't have clerical staff, and so yet we're asking them to departments, but they don't have any clerical support for some of those things. So that's something, you know, could we share a staff member between the departments or just kind of inch our way in? But again, I know that all these things cost money. Mrs. Heck doesn't have a clerical either, you know, she's taking. But again, I know that all these things cost money. Mrs. Heck doesn't have a clerical either, you know, she's taking pieces of Jen's clerical. And so those are things that, you know, we want to identify and then just things.
Those though were in our budget. We just weren't able to find people to fill the roles, right?
No, not in Mrs. Heck's office. That's not in the budget.
Not, that wasn't in the budget for this year?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No. So make recommendations regarding recruiting, you know, non-instructional personnel. That's been really challenging for our aides and teacher assistants and things along those lines, our substitutes. They're instructional, but the board, you know, raised some amounts for the substitutes to try to draw more people in. Made some adjustments, thank you so much, to the clerical contract, to not have our clericals wait 90 days to get health insurance. You know, I personally, I can speak, like, I think that treats staff very fairly and recognizes that, you know, they're coming to a new job and to take that kind of risk, so important. And then some vacation days for them, important. So thank you so much. It was well-received by the unit. So I don't know if it's trickled down to all the members yet, but it's certainly from the unit president and the UPSU representative. But it's important that we continue those conversations, continue to automate procedures and train staff on utilizing the resources. So the struggle that we're having is that a lot of the procedures are not automated, but you need time to set it up. And we don't have the extra set because you're still working and so you don't have time to set this aside to get that going. So we're finding that a challenge and I'm not telling you we have all the answers for that, but we're working on it. Okay. We're happy to report out.
It may be, maybe obvious, but again, I see another tie-in between this one and sort of the board, the higher-level goal, creating strategic hiring plan and retention plan. So thank you for this.
Yeah, a lot of them, I think, really intersect and obviously we wouldn't be creating these goals if they didn't support yours. But, you know, we worked on these in the summer with our leadership team and a lot of those members are here. And last year we had very lofty goals and many of them we accomplished and many of them are multi-year goals. Like we always want to improve student achievement across the board. We want to move the number and the needle. But it does take time and, you know, with changeover in staff, it can be even that much more challenging.
Great, thank you. And thank you to everyone who helped put these together. And we recognize that everything takes time, so we're in it together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, shall we move on to appointments? We now move on to personnel recommendations of the superintendent. We will take all appointment recommendations on pages one through three as a slate. May I have a first? Kate? Second? Heather? Questions? Discussion?
No, but you'll see a lot of the clericals, a number of positions. And I want to thank Mr. Huntsman. He did a lot of the work with really securing, you'll see teacher aides. We've been really short. It's almost November. And so to be able to capture some of these teacher aides on this agenda is critical.
Great. All right, thank you.
Some TAs, but we're working on it.
All in favor? Okay, we will now continue to audience to visitors. No, oh, oh, sorry, additional business. We will now move on to additional business. We will take the memorandum of agreement with our clerical unit on page three. May I have a first? Lisa? May I have a second? Heather? Questions? Discussion? All in favor? We now have audience to visitors. We don't have visitors though. So we will now take a motion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a first? Kate? Second? Lisa? All in favor? Thank you, everyone.